Our President, Mary Morning, is not going to make it this morning. She's feeling a bit ill. So I've taken over those responsibilities. First, we go get Pastor Elijah Mitchell of Seashore. Please stand up. I'm just giving everyone a stand. Please go for it.
Let us pray. Almighty Father, Creator of heaven and earth and certainly everything in between, we humbly come before you with thanksgiving and of a heart's asking for your love and mercy. We lift your name on high above in the name that has ever existed. Almighty God, you are our help in ages past, and the fourth and final week of Advent begins today. As we near Christmas, we spend this moment in prayer for the Harrison County Police Supervisors. God, you have ordained them to rule and govern in Harrison County. Lord, give them wisdom, give them the ability and more purpose to carry out their duties and responsibilities. I know, Lord, their tasks are difficult. Their duties are many, and their responsibilities are heavy. Therefore, I pray for them that you would support them with your might during their meeting this morning. I ask you to bless them, to protect them, and pour out your supernatural favor upon them as they conduct in this day for the improvement of this county. And God, I pray for divine intervention in their lives, and let your will be done in their lives, because you are going to shift things around for them today. Lord, you're going to let things work in your favor and for the citizens of Harrison County. And Lord, guide them in their work today, and they will be guided. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
If you can get a board to turn Mr. Tim Hall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Just want to let everyone know that today is our last meeting of the 2021 year. I think we've had a good year, many challenges. And we're really looking forward to our first meeting in January of 2022. And next, I know the agenda is a bit awkward for me at the moment. Because under normal circumstances, our President Supervisor Martin would be presiding over this meeting. However, being that it is me, I just want first, before I pass it to Supervisor Rocco, eventually to our Board of Trustees, Tim Hall, I'm very thankful for this recognition. You go around and move once, and you'd be thankful. You make it around sixty times, and you're really thankful. Plus, what else they gonna do? We have an environmental site, then we have Supervisor Rocco in Green Reserve.
Hazardous waste dump after me.
To my left, we have supervisor Martin Aladdin, who's done some tremendous things in West Harrison County. He got everything in out to him. So I guess they figure, well, let's get a candidate. So I'm very thankful for that day.
And right now, we'd like to have an order for claiming December 29th, 2021 as Daniel Kent Jones Day within Harrison County. And to read the proclamation will be our honorable attorney, Tim Hall.
Judges are honorable.
Well, I thought I'd give that title today.
Do it here. Order proclaiming December 29th, 2021 as Daniel Kent Jones Day within Harrison County, Mississippi. Whereas Daniel Kent Jones was born in Mendon Hall, Mississippi on December 29th, 1961 to Cali and the late Dan Jones. And whereas Kent attended Gulfport Middle School and graduated from Harrison Central High School in 1980. I add, he was a star running back at that time. And whereas while Harrison County itself, not only academically but athletically, as well as earning recognition, was an All-American student athlete in four-year letterman in football, basketball, track, and field. Whereas after being named to multiple All-Conference, All-State, National, All-Star teams, Kent Jones was the first player in the history of Harrison Central High School to have his jersey officially retired and was selected to the inaugural class of the Gulfport Sports Hall of Fame in 2015. Whereas Kent continued his education by attending Mississippi Valley State University and the University of Southern Mississippi, where he was a three-year varsity letterman in football while receiving his bachelor of science degree in criminal justice. And whereas he began his career in public service by serving as a police officer for the Virginia Beach, Virginia Police Officer from 1986 to 1987. Whereas upon attorneys at Mississippi Gulf Coast in 1988, he served as an investigator for the Biloxi Police Department for approximately four years. We'll stick together. And whereas in 1992, Kent served as a corporate investigator for Mississippi Power until 2005, when he became a safety and environmental officer for Harrison County District Four. And whereas in January 2016, he was elected as Harrison County Supervisor for District Four. And whereas Kent has a continued service as a mentor to many community youth and student athletes in Gulfport and Harrison Central school system. Kent has also participated in many civic and professional organizations, such as the Capital Science fraternity, Inc., and Turkey Creedmont, Gulfport Alumni Association, American Society of Industrial Security Emergency Relief Effort, various support programs, and other community holiday and events. And whereas throughout his career in public service, Kent Jones has made a keen awareness of the needs and concerns of not only his family, especially daughters Brooke and Paige, and grandson Ryland for the residents of District Four in Harrison County as well. Whereas on December 29th, Kent Jones will mark the occasion of his sixtieth birthday. Whereas it is fitting and appropriate that Kent Jones be honored and congratulated upon the occasion of his sixtieth birthday. Now, therefore, it is ordered by the Board Supervisor of Harrison County, Mississippi, that the Board on behalf of the citizens of Harrison County does hereby spend its most sincere congratulations and best wishes to Kent Jones on the occasion of his sixtieth birthday, as I hereby proclaim December 29th, 2021 as Daniel Kent Jones Day within Harrison County, Mississippi, order adopted on the 13th day of December, 2021.
It's his birthday, and do we get a day off?
Well, I would share some of this with y'all, but it's not a whole lot to put around, so I'm.
They had it framed for you. I had to read the big writing one for some reason. Couldn't read the little one.
I couldn't.
I wouldn't be able to read it either.
Before we leave, I want to recognize my family, who's there today this morning.
Yeah.
Y'all want to stand? Y'all want to come up and get a quick picture to get out of mind? Thank you so much.
Is your mom okay?
Yeah, she's fine. She's been there today this morning. Oh, that guy's my sister.
Your sister, exactly. Is she okay?
Yeah, she's fine.
Okay.
Thank you all. And next, we have a, we recognize. Oh, yeah, you can get a motion. Or item number one.
Have a motion?
Any further discussion, I don't prefer the motion, say aye.
Aye.
You gotta vote for yourself on that one.
That's okay. Recognize, this will recognize Gabriel Ramsey, Military Veteran Innovation Army Specialist.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to discuss special use permits for national forests for District One, Blackwell Farm Road and White Plains Road intersection, southeastern district of that location, NCC Road included, for accessibility and navigational access, including a burn pit and primitive camping in that location. The combination Riverside Park that has been established off Lamy Bridge by Tyglens Funds. It's quality of life, blue economy, USM IDS mission statement for therapeutic therapy amenities for loved ones and caretakers. We have twelve casinos, what type amenities? And included with this, Veterans Health Administration innovative ecosystem, they just initiated external partnership program, Human Center Design, meaning that I request a sponsorship for transportation summit at the Coast Coliseum. Included state of America business competition for the future, United States Chamber. Hire our heroes and spouses, talent service, U.S. Chamber. USPTO C-12 Chair Gene Romano, U.S. Chamber Director. What we're doing is amenities and retaining assumes for higher learning education. I have all this for us. Included with this enhancement recreation, we have an MDEQ BP contract and a vetting bottle water company we're launching. We donate houses and caskets and dormitories with homeless. We're going for an L-3C initiative in Jackson and legislature action. L-3C initiative is where it can incorporate 501(c)(3) with LLC for grant right purposes and tax purposes. We wish you hadn't recognized it, but we're going to recognize Mississippi. We're going to represent Mississippi more appropriately instead of Mr. Bermaning. Thank you much for your time and guidance. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Next, item three, recognize Frank Woodall. Be expected insurance to present insurance policy as yours.
Thank you all. I have in front of y'all a lot of information, some of which I presented earlier this year. The first pages, this is just a summary of our current renewal status. The next three pages are just the state of the market as it relates to property insurance and then cyber liability insurance, and I'll get into that in just a little while. We anticipate increases this year. We are still working with our carriers, as some of our quotes we receive Friday and Saturday this weekend. All in all, we are looking good if we renew at the current level of insurance that we've been purchasing. But in these books, I've provided, there's two of them. If you turn to page 12 on each one of them, one is the wind resistant schedule and one is our non-wind resistant schedule. This is the same modeling service the insurance carriers use whenever they're providing quotes on your insurance. After Katrina, some of y'all will remember, insurance was very difficult, is a hard market as we're in today. We're not as bad as post-Katrina, but we're getting there. And at the time, we took a loss limit on our statement of values, which basically says, we have $95 million of value, but we're only going to cover, say, $50 million of that. The modeling report, and the reason why I want to show y'all the modeling report, they model y'all's property based on a 250-year storm. This includes wind and surge, and they estimate our total exposure in a storm will be $11.5 million. And then on our non-wind resistant schedule, $7.2 million. I'm making the recommendation that we go back to a loss limit rather than carrying the whole $95.6 million of wind coverage, that we only cover $50 million in wind coverage. That would be a reduction of premium of $99,000. And if we were to do that on fire theft, vandalism, as well as our wind, just carry $50 million. Now, all, we still have coverage on the other buildings, so we still have coverage on our total insured value. But the idea would be the max they would pay would be $50 million. If the industry's estimating their loss is going to be $17 million, I think if we carry $50 million, which would be multiple times, what they estimate the damage to be would be adequate enough for FEMA to say that we did what we thought was prudent. And again, these are the same models that the insurance carriers use. So that would be a savings of $147,000, almost bringing us back to where we were last year at renewal. There are going to be several changes between now and renewal date. And so what I'd like to ask the Board, as we did last year, is to accept to go no greater than 1.1 and allow me to continue to work with the administration as we have to negotiate. One example is, this weekend, Saturday, we got a quote in for our non-wind resistant schedule, and it was a flat renewal, but it was actual cash value, and obviously, we don't want to do that. And so we're having to negotiate back and forth with the carriers, make sure that all the layers, because we're going to pick up three more carriers than what we had last year. We need to make sure all their layers match from top to bottom. They have all agreed to use a single adjuster. That would be Richard Booker, who was y'all's previous adjuster. And then one of the issues that we found with not just this account, but other accounts is the wind deductible buyback carrier would not accept the same adjuster as all the other layers. We have gotten that approval to accept, so we'll have a single adjuster from bottom up. One of the biggest changes we have right now is on our better constructed buildings. The quote they provided was a 2% deductible, where we had a 1% deductible last year. I have asked for quotes to do a deductible buy down just to show y'all what it would cost if we were to try to buy that down. We were fortunate, and these past two storms, they didn't add that the deductibles were covered by FEMA. We don't know what they'll do in the future, but I at least want to show y'all what those options would be. And so that's basically where we are. We have had a number of changes when it comes to our statement of values for our equipment, as well as our auto. Skylar has done an amazing job of working through that process with us, and y'all should be very proud. It's been a lot of work for her and for our agency of cleaning a lot of this stuff up. Keep in mind that there was not an asset that y'all had that was not covered. There's provision in y'all's policy that allows for non-scheduled equipment to be covered. The intent was not to be as egregious as we were as far as our statement of values. And so, but that is cleaned up. It did cause some difficulty in the marketplace with our current carriers, but that provision is still going to remain in our policy. And so, all in all, I'm very pleased with our renewal process. It's going to change quite a bit, but it's not going to change for the worse. It's going to change for the better from this point. So I can take any questions that y'all may have.
Anything you need and thank from us today?
I think if y'all could give the approval of the administration to allow us to continue to work this to the last minute, and then I'll re-present what our final outcome was in the January meeting. Along in the January meeting, I'd like to discuss the possibility of going in executive session to discuss our claims review. Obviously, that includes employees' information. And so I would like to go through a deep dive of where our claims is, because that's the biggest number compared, in comparison to this.
I would make a motion to authorize his request.
Just a second.
Thank you. I would favor that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried for the next session.
Thank you. And then in January, we'll also provide y'all an entire summary of who offered quotes and what those quotes were, that way you can proceed. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brian.
Order taking off the table act on increasing paupers cremation and removal fees. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion? Is that good?
Yep.
Y'all.
They're pouring, Ken.
I would favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carried. Item five, order considering approving increase in paupers cremation and removal fees. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion. Whatever.
Just pick one. We all think we all.
I second it.
What we're seconding is what the proposal was the last week.
Right.
What was presented.
Yeah, what was presented.
I would favor the motion, say aye.
I'm proud of the Board. One thing, I did do some research on this just because of the question, but Legacy Cremation Services advertises cremation for $690,000. Marshall currently advertises for $795,000. All I think, and of course, you know, the Board has the option here to put this out for proposals so that you get the lowest investment. This is for indigents or paupers, cremation primarily. So if you're going to approve $800 for cremation, it would look good if you got advertisement for $695,000.
Well, I think we mentioned that to the coroner, and he said, you know, that's the sale price. And then by the time you actually do it, it's way more removed, he said.
Yeah, but they're, you know, because they add on stuff to it. But in a pauper case, you're not going to be adding anything to it because if your family involved for the most part, if family becomes involved, then they're responsible for that.
I think there's somebody on record offering a lower price than what we just, we're considering. You know, I think we need to go out for.
No, sir, Brian got called out on a, on an emergency.
What do you think, Pat?
I think what you're, it makes good sense what you're saying. It's just good economics. I just.
Yeah.
The Board will get criticized for agreeing to $800, then they have a press lady.
I just think it's prudent that if we have information that is lower than what this recommend, that possibly could be lower than what this recommendation is, we need to go out for RFPs.
And make a motion.
Is it RFP or bid?
Well, you could, you need to just approve an increase to $695,000, which is the lowest advertised rate. And if they don't like it, then Brian can come back and talk to it again and justify it. But I mean, I just would be concerned if the Board's going to get criticized if you got advertised for $695,000.
And justify it, at least.
Because you're not getting any belt. What Brian was talking about is when you go, and I did this for a client recently, her husband died, and nobody else could help her. I don't even know that. It was $3,000, but she bought two earners and had one ship in South America. But I mean, it was a big deal, so the cost was, I think it ended up being like $6,000 by the time it got through, but that was because she, what she chose to. I mean, I just, they're paup, the paupers, I'm not saying that, this is taxpayers' money.
Yeah, for sure.
The Board might get criticized.
Would you, could, would it be going out for bid?
I think we need to go.
Or the lowest one advertised?
I would make a substitute motion, Claire, let's just go out for bids.
I second the motion.
Proposal.
Proposal.
Request for proposal.
I second the motion.
Give us the motion and properly second it, the substitute motion to go out for bid. I would favor that motion, say aye.
Aye.
I would oppose.
I think it's just for this particular condition.
You want to just, you can approve the rest of it and do that just for cremation?
Yeah, the rest of it shouldn't be an issue, should it?
I don't see, the rest of it, I don't see. I know that, like, removal fees, the drivers have paid $75 a piece. So they're not making anything off of that. So, you know, the rest of it appears to be aligned, it's only the advertised cremation is $695 versus $800. And I mean, now Marshall's a $795,000, which is effectively.
But there is only fault out the motion, it's only for the cremation.
Or discremation, unclaimed.
And include, could we just include in that motion the acceptance of the other proposal? Be done with?
You could.
Yeah, let the motion reflect that.
Is that going to be clear?
Okay, so you're going to motion.
Is it going to be clear? What would you suggest for the clear enough of the?
Sorry, I'm reading the agenda.
It's okay.
What's the question?
So to clear up the, to make it clear for everybody in everybody's office today, should we make a motion to accept all, everything except the.
I can restate it.
Restated or?
Motion to approve an increase in removal fees from $150 to $300 and pay transport to Mississippi Crone Lab, proposed fee of $75 each way. And then third, that the Board authorizes a request for proposals for cremation or unclaimed bodies to go out for proposals.
That's it.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, that will, just so the Board knows, that we have an agreement with the settlement that we did. As I recall, the settlement authorized that the Board chose to go out and change it. So you would be changing that one aspect of it, but they all can bid, so it's not like it's.
Yeah.
They're not getting the chance to bid on it now. Some of the funeral homes don't have crematoriums, but they do that through arrangement with the ones that do have.
All right.
I make that motion?
That's the last one.
I'd like the motion to reflect.
All right, I won't.
No, it's okay.
Next up, consent agenda item.
Did we go there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Agenda items number six to thirteen has been placed on the consent agenda, same with punitive and non-controversial matters, on which all supervisors are likely to agree. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I would favor the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen, task collector order spread twenty minutes. First, there are changes for the task collectors' office at this dental file bureau administrator and human resources department.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. I would favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Order approving installation of data cables in amount of $3,585 for Champion Electric LLC for the task collectors' Gulfport courthouse, payable from account 001104581, using funds from the interface fees, interface fees, and authorizing budget minimum there. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I would favor the motion, say aye. I would oppose, motion carries. Item sixteen, order approving travel for William Bryan Switzer, corner and off the devoir junior deputy corner to attend Mississippi Corners Medical Examining Association winter conference, January 19th to 21st, 2022, in Jackson, Mississippi. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I would favor, say aye. I would oppose, motion carries. Item seventeen, order designating Matthew Stratford, DMA director, as an African agent to coordinate with FEMA regarding public assistance for DR 4626. Back in item private, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I would favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would oppose, motion carries. Item eighteen, order approving purchase of three laptops for new hires and one television for the education conference room for the youth court office located at Lake Elroy Street, Biloxi, in amount of $2,166,99.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
This is for the.
So the money's coming from the FIP grant, right? For, okay, good.
Any further discussion, I would favor the motion, say aye. I would oppose, motion carries. Item nineteen, order approving the local purchase of 2018 Ford Transit passenger van in amount of $4,000 from Casa, payable from line item 030193915. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion.
Yeah.
What do we find?
They're buying a van, they're buying a, it's a transit passenger van that was Casa's van, that Casa purchased. They're buying it out of that grant.
Oh, that's out of that grant as well?
Yes. And they had, they had three quotes, but they had three quotes.
Yeah. The problem is, I know that we paid $25,000 for this van, Casa. When I say we, Casa paid $25,000 for this van a year and a half ago. It's not an XLT, it's probably what you refer, they compared it to. It doesn't even have carpet, it's got a radio and seats. So why would we let them pay, why would we pay $44,000? So why would we let them pay for, why would we pay forty-four thousand dollars for a twenty-five thousand four hundred dollar vehicle we got from a guy in Pascagoula, I mean?
I don't, I don't know that they.
No, no, it's not you, I think.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know that they knew or personally knew that.
The other thing is, the fact that we have it under youth court shows, let me guess what we're gonna do with this van, youth court's gonna use it, right?
Yeah, it's a part of that grant, the FIP grant.
See, another thing is, the twenty-six thousand we paid for this.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Was Voca money, so that means we're gonna be refunding Voca money for a van we paid twenty-five thou, you see, this just.
Oh, have we, come on, just this man, and we're back so already?
Okay, so when all the Casa stuff happened, we had that big van, the white van at the shelter, that's.
No, no, this is what I'm saying.
No, I know it's not, and we thought, well, what are we gonna do with that now, well, Beverly said she could use it at one of her senior centers, okay, great. So, then we had this other van, Casa bought again, with, I think half of it was Voca money, right, like thirteen?
Casa's, I don't know.
Well, y'all are over Casa now, I mean, that's why this is under youth court, I mean, let's be honest.
Casa's, it's on agency or station, so I don't have.
Well, not really anymore, but, um, okay, well, that, that's my two cents.
Well, I have a question, is, and maybe we can answer it, what they paid for?
This is a new van.
No, it's a used van.
A used thing.
Yeah, but.
A used thing.
Is it because of the, it's just one question.
Has somebody paid twenty-five thousand for this van that we're paying forty-four thousand for?
We don't know that, but we can get that.
Well, we need to find out, because I'm like Rebecca, if somebody, if we're paying forty-four thousand dollars for a van that was purchased for twenty-five thousand dollars, there's something wrong.
May, may I have?
This is worth forty-five thousand.
One question, is it because of the shortage of used automobiles and that we're having right now, is that why the price went up?
I'm not sure, I was provided the Casa quote and their, their original purchase from Estabro that surprise the powers mentioned, and then we had two backup quotes, one was purchasing, they got the quote, and the other was another that we found online through Casa. And it was the same specs that was used for the van that Casa is offering us for forty-four thousand, so purchasing did get their own quote, and I think it was around forty-six thousand for the same specs. Where did Casa purchase it from?
Estabro.
I'm guessing Estabro, that's this information, I got one sheet from their purchase that they have.
Did they, did you ask them why it was so extra, from, from what, twenty twenty?
I didn't ask what they originally purchased it for, I just, they were trying to get rid of a van, we were trying to buy a van, and so they gave us a quote and information on it, so I'm not sure if the purchasing.
Did they give you the bill of sale?
I'm sorry.
Did they give you the bill of sale or how much they paid for it?
No, because it was on for approval today, and it was, that's the later stuff.
Would the board want, would you, would you want to, would the board wanna find out if table, can we table it, do our time to table it, and we come back and see why there was such a discrepancy in the price?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, dear.
Need a motion to table?
Uh, of a motion to table?
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the Fox and Rick order authorizing transfer in amount of eighteen hundred dollars from zero zero one, five two zero, six ninety-five to zero zero one, five two zero, nine one nine, to purchase a laptop, tablet for background, playground, equipment inspections, motion.
That motion, second.
Got a discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, you have a zoning.
Yes, sir, this is a regular case before the planning commission, we'd ask that you, uh, compare with the recommendation of the planning commission.
You get a motion.
A motion.
Planning.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two, order proven payment of auto damage claim in amount of one thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents payable claimant intensely to be paid from the tour account as recommended by Walt Warren, Associated Justice.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three, order proven payment of claims listed. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-four, order concurrent with the county administrator on the form that is listed and on file with the payroll clerk, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-five, order spread in twenty minutes, this of emergency local and state contract orders issued by the purchase department towards the month of November. Twenty twenty-one, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-six, order accepting selections committee's recommendation to award the professional and any basic service consultants to provide services for the project twenty twenty, Harrison County, Marlin Lightning Boulevard improvements to Eli Gil Harley Architects, and authorizing the board president to execute the agreement on receipt and after review by the board attorney.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion, just for clarification, that's not county funds being used for that.
It's a grant.
It's a grant. Grant.
Sounds good. Any other, any other discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the chef, or the deputy general, we recognize, we recognize the chef as the reports number of persons currently housed in Harrison County jail facility.
Uh, total, seven fifty-six, fifty-seven misdemeanors, a hundred and twenty females, eighty-three cleared inmates, and thirty-three federal inmates.
Thanks, sir. Item twenty, order proving payments of claims listed below. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, order authorizing Long Beach Auto Auction, Inc., to conduct a dealer, a dealer only, a dealer only seized weapon auction Friday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, motion.
Second discussion.
Yes.
This is just weapons that we've seized, not vehicles, right, just weapons?
Yes, just weapons.
And are we, uh, able to go bid on these things, or am I?
You gotta be, you gotta be at that level, you have a federal firearm license.
What about my safety officer, Neil Rash?
You would have, Tim can address.
You'd have to be a dealer, cuz of federal laws.
I'm just wondering, cause Neil's saying he needs a rep, okay, thank you.
Don't be giving them a bit.
Gary has one, he says.
I don't worry, I'll, I'll, I'll shoot him. Good guy.
In further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item thirty, order approving mileage reimbursements for any kind of travel for the following employees. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-one, chancellor clerk, order proving payments of claims listed. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-two, order authorizing transfer in amount of three hundred ninety-six thousand of state funds to project funds of South twenty-four twelve M, High Tower Road, County Farm Road, and Traditional Boulevard, Magnus Ole Road, A to C. Cover the cost of change order number one, contingency and engineering, change order number one was, change order number one was, board supervisor approved on December of twenty twenty-one, motion.
Motion.
Sir.
Discussion.
That satisfied the other discussion, Doug, that satisfied the problem?
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just so the board knows, we have now received the last easement on that.
Yay.
Well, that's on the next. Thank you, that's great.
Item thirty, the order proven, request by Brown Mitchell and Matt Alexander, Inc. to advertise for bids for the Maureen Road Bridge replacement project, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motions, say aye.
That's the one.
That's the one we're seeing, that's the one we're reading.
Great news, thank you.
That's it, yeah, okay. All in favor? Order approving the open doors, Home Coalition's request for the reimbursements in amount of fifty-seven thousand three eighty-one, seven one invoice three oh two, and four hundred twenty-two thousand seven six dollars and seventy-one, send invoice number three oh three, for emergency rental assistance program to be paid from zero six nine six eight six seven hundred, and for administrative expenses in an amount of sixty-two thousand four sixteen, invoice number three hundred, and forty-two two oh seven, invoice number three oh three, to be paid from the, from the zero six nine, zero, I'm sorry, six eight six five five six.
Motion.
Okay.
Discussion. Thanks for coming.
Well, thank you.
Do you have anything?
What's that?
Do you have anything you'd like to say, for the program?
No, we, we appreciate the support and it has helped over fourteen hundred families stay in their homes in Harrison County.
Awesome.
Thank you so much, thanks for coming.
You do a great job, by the way.
Thank you, we have a good team.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-five, authori, order authorizing the board president to sign reimbursement request to Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality in amount of ten thousand three forty-one for the monthly household hazardous waste site, solid waste system grant SW twelve sixty-two, motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Sorry, yeah, what's this?
This is a request of reimbursement for the garland. I haven't remembered.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item, item thirty-six, order authorizing the milling and foundational work required for the resurfacing wells, ferry code and Brandon James Grove within the city of Belusia, per according to the local government cooperation agreement between the city and Harrison County, motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-seven, order proving the repair, resurfacing, and striping of the parking lot, white plains, United Methodist Church, prudent to turn of the property usage and indemnity between the church and Harrison County, motion.
Uh, uh, second, I'll make a motion for discussion.
Yeah, second for discussion.
Tim, all, all this particular thing, is, I thought we paid for the use of that property, if we paid for the use of that property for one day, would we be, why would we be paid in the parking lot?
We, if I recall this agreement, Trish is at office, so, if, this was where we used this for voting, we say.
That's correct.
And we agreed to maintain the parking lot. It's been years, since, I mean.
We're not paying them, I, I thought that one time.
We should be paying them, we should be doing it, is my understanding.
What I'm trying to, we determine, do we pay the two hundred and fifty dollars, whatever we pay, as well as pay the parking lot?
Maureen, I didn't look at the agreement, I apologize.
We might need to check that.
You can table it and I'll look at it, I, I, my recollection of it is, when we did that, we agreed to pay the parking lot.
Okay.
So I assume that was years and years back when.
Well, that, that's.
This is in Wendy's district, that's my recollection.
Who's?
This district.
Wendy's.
Isn't this more?
Wendy's.
Wendy doesn't work here anymore.
I know, but this is when it was done.
I agree, what I.
I remember it, and we agreed to pay the parking lot, and I think put in some handicap accessible doors, and so that was the, that was the consideration for the lease. Um, that was many years ago, so I assume the parking lot needs to be, and that, that was part of it, we were maintaining.
I just didn't want to pay two hundred and some dollars for the new car, and then pay parking lots and do that too, as well. Years ago, that's what we used to do, is just take care of their parking lots and all that, but then we started paying them, the leases included a pay.
Just table it, let me look at the agreement, it should have been included, so we can see it, I apologize for that. It should have been. So we can see actually.
I don't reckon you can prove the agreement.
No, I don't see the agreement.
I would approve it, depending whether we pay it or not, if we pay in part, I'd have an issue with paying the parking lot.
Not gonna happen before Christmas anyway, so let's, let's just stay until January and I'll look at, yeah, we'll get the agreement to the board.
Motion to table.
Okay, second.
Second.
Mr. President, I'd like to find out if we're paying.
Okay, just want to be clear.
I'd like to find out real quick.
Okay, we'll come back to it.
I would still need to look at the agreement, so I'll type it.
All in favor of the motion?
You don't want me to find out, paying?
No, let's see the agreement. It'll tell us, the agreement will tell us.
Okay. All in favor of that motion to table, say aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Item thirty-eight, order proven accordingly, job reporting timeline for submission to the Mississippi Development Man Authority, reference to Gulfport Hotter, motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-nine, order proving payment in amount of eleven thousand two hundred to Alan Purvis and associates for fourteen appraisal reports for eminent domain project number South twenty-four five nine intersection, widening at Canal Land and Road in Harrison County.
Motion.
Motion. Sir.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Order proving twenty-second amendment to the letter of credit agreement between Harrison County and Mississippi and Bank of America. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item forty-one, order proving travel for all board supervisors to Buckeyes located in Robbinsdale, Alabama, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Motion.
Yeah, yeah, that's Maureen.
What's that?
Maureen. I didn't know anything about, did you, did y'all know?
I didn't need.
I didn't know anything about it.
Who's going to carry it?
I'm not gonna be able to go to Maureen.
No, nobody said it, I've been to Buckeyes a thousand times, I don't need to go, but.
But if I was to go on, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I don't care. It's just to drive the vehicle, is what we're voting on?
I guess, no, it's a travel, you have to vote on your travel to go out, out of state.
But I mean, is it a county vehicle or just the people?
I don't know.
Cause the group wasn't a vehicle.
I think the intention was, was Perklin wanted to see, I was going to drive her over, and she, I think she came, but she not seen it, wanted to go, and if anybody else.
So we're just voting on you driving a county vehicle out of state, gotcha.
How she's feeling now, so we're not sure if we're pulling out Maureen.
Yeah.
Oh, she's not telling me.
This was all talked about for her.
Okay.
Okay, gotcha.
Or just, or just change, or, 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 or any other date.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve that, take off the December fourteenth.
Yeah, because I might go, not September.
So, so what, and then what we need to do then, is like, like what Doc's saying, is we want to disprove any supervisor to go in, not just in one.
That's what.
Okay. Okay.
Any supervisor, anytime.
Okay, any time, okay. Sounds good. Any, um, further discussion?
Oh, second.
Oh, you need to get a second.
Second.
Okay, we're, we're trying to get on Friday tonight. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, okay, motion carries. Item forty-two, order proving installation of street lights as listed, motion.
Motion.
Sir.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item forty, the order adjudicating the authorization expenditure that's listed as necessary to every time, an opportunity to resource in Harrison County, motion.
Action.
Second. I second the discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. And moving right along, uh, Ms. Pam, or you have anything?
I have payment, uh, for time help, dental help. They're, they're monthly payment, ten hundred and seventy-eight thousand fifty-five.
That's just outstanding pay.
That's the.
Part of, motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That's it.
No, sir.
Uh, just one quick thing, on the, uh, on the bucket, that stipulated Monday, Tuesday, Friday, what day, just, just as it.
Any day.
Is it?
Probably it matters, long as it's approved for travel.
Okay. Uh, let's see, I don't think I have anything, supervisor power.
Um, we had talked about it before, but I forgot to make a motion last week, you know, I'm very excited to have Alan Jones, he's with the Sheriff's Department in our senior programs, now he's gonna be heading up our Lyman Senior Center, and it's been a dream of his to do, and I'm very excited. Instead of him taking a little tiny pay cut, can we just, I'd like to make a motion to keep his pay at the eighteen twenty-six.
It was, it was on, it was on.
We didn't vote on it, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it was.
Yes, ma'am.
It was part of the consent agenda?
No.
No, it was under person.
Personally, I tend.
Oh, okay, well, never mind, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Nothing, once the board has a question.
Sir, you have anything?
I do, but we'll discuss it when you become president.
See you next year.
Yeah. Well, Rebecca, you didn't want to talk about that contract, you called me, tech, you know.
Yeah, and I read through it, it looks like, we talked about the Women Resource Center?
No, no, no. I'm gonna weigh on that. No, no, we do that executive session, no, we don't do it today or week.
Yeah, could we do a little quick executive session, I guess, I have a lot of thoughts about response times from ambulances. It'll be quick.
Call it for executive session, and it's talking about performance of the contractor and, uh, potential litigation.
Yeah. But I just go in the executive session, I, I don't have a problem with it, Tim is saying that it's justified for executive session.
Qualifies under the position.
Motion, go in the executive session, discuss contract obligation.
Of A M R.
Of A M R.
Okay. Further discussion on that, that motion, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Captain, the family done this.